Okay, I think we are at seven. We're gonna go ahead and get the meeting started. Uh, call the meeting in order and Debbie will be the note. We will begin with Alexis. I believe it is to the United States of America and to the Republic of the British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So our first order of business would be the consent agenda regarding the minutes from November 25th.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. For clarity for everybody, are we talking, you guys can hear me clear? Okay, moved and seconded, and any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Alright, we've got our students.
I'm Samantha Lloyd. Uh, in Skills USA, they're going to kick off with a competition training in January, with the state contest being in March. Students have been learning skills so they can complete the competition requirements. And they are working with local businesses and with Schenega Community College. Uh, the STEM Club, the students are currently working towards a bridge building competition that will take place at OSU in February. And there are three groups of students involved for a total of 12 boxes. And the National Honor Society, uh, in November, they inducted 37 new members to NHS. Students inducted had a minimum GPA of 3.75, at least 20 volunteer hours, and a variety of leadership roles. President Trevor Johnson, Vice President Marie Tolmachov, Secretary Cory Collinghouse, and Representative Maggie Kelly shared this evening along with guest speaker Kevin Ortega. NHS has a total of 64 active members.
Um, and for ASB, uh, we're just finishing up our tree of giving fundraiser, and we've actually surpassed our goal of $5,000 and made $6,000, which is awesome, which means we can spend $60 on this show. And we're gonna shop for them this Wednesday at the back of the council. Uh, uh, for basketball, both boys and girls won their first games. Uh, tomorrow, the girls have a home game against Malala, and the boys have an away game at Cleveland. Uh, wrestling did well at the first tournament, and they actually have another tournament tomorrow at Cascade. Uh, and then swimming, they have, they had their first meet at Malala, and everyone swam, which is always fun. And then they also have their first meet, a home meet, tomorrow, uh, Tuesday against Preston Valley, and that's always a good competition, though, if you're coming. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah. Alright, we're gonna get ready and begin our first public comment period. Before we actually do that, we are going to give a brief update on, uh, the proceedings from our last couple meetings, and Tom's gonna, uh, go ahead.
Okay, uh, the Silver Falls School District has hired attorney Jolie Patterson of Miller-Nash Graham &amp; Dunn to do an initial review of the complaint file on November 25th against five school board members. Ms. Patterson has over 25 years of legal experience working in, working with a wide range of education and public institutions, including public and private universities, community colleges, school districts, private schools, special districts, and other public entities. Ms. Patterson's job will be to review the complaint, associate exhibits, and other documents related or referenced in the complaint, example, board policy and operating rules. Once she has completed her review, she will provide the district with a written report that will be provided to the school board and made publicly available, including the identification of any matters requiring further investigation or follow-up. If there are matters requiring further investigation, the district will then contract with another independent investigator from another legal firm to complete that work. The role of Ms. Patterson and anyone subsequently hired to complete a further investigation will be to produce an objective, independent review and investigation ensuring a transparent and thorough analysis and full report to the public, not to advocate for, not to advocate for or to take up defense of individual board members. Thank you. Uh, and this, this initial review should probably take, we're anticipating about two weeks, so we should have, have this thing done before the holidays.
Thanks. Okay, with that said, we are going to move into our first, uh, public comment period. So I'm gonna read the introduction that we always read. So we're glad you're here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, or compliments. Please be certain to sign in before you present. Remember that we all model the way for our students, and we ask that you share your thoughts in a respectful way. The board's role during public comment is to listen. Rarely will you get immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity among speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. A second public comment will occur later in the gym, uh, specific to discussion and action items. And as a favor to us, if you are speaking for a group, please make sure to say so at the beginning. It will help us out so we can know. Thank you. So with that, if anybody would like to address the board, then certainly.
Can you hear me? Great. Well, first I'd like to start by saying, or expressing my deep appreciation to each and every one of you on the school board. I just really appreciate your time and your commitment in helping to create truly remarkable and magnificent schools, so thank you for that. I don't normally come to a school board meeting and talk unless I think I have something that will enhance the school community and the community as a whole. And that's why I'm here right now to be here. Something that I think is a good idea that I'd like to present to you is that we incorporate into the schools as well as the administrative offices in the morning a moment of silence, one minute of silence. And let me tell you why. In our world today, we're constantly bombarded by outside things. You know this, all the stimulation we have. We watch our phones, we text, video games, television shows, all the joys out there coming from outside, that I think we have forgotten the importance of becoming still and quieting our thoughts. From my own experience over the last 10 years of incorporating anywhere from 10 to 30 minutes each morning of silence, of meditation, I can tell you the benefits that I have received have been peace both inward and outside my life, as well as joy throughout my day and a lot of fulfillment. Now, I know my own anecdotal evidence isn't gonna work here. So over this week, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna present to you through an email, and send you some articles, some videos, some research that have been done on schools throughout our United States that have incorporated a moment of silence, so that you can find out the benefits of that. Just briefly right here, I'll share some with you. They are increased test scores, dramatic decrease in bullying, and Mr. Pearson, you'll like this, increased attendance, as well as overall kinder, more friendly interaction between students and teachers. Okay, great. So I'm gonna invite us all right now, just to take the last few seconds that I have, and if my need was at will to do this, we're gonna do a moment of silence. And in this, this moment of stillness, I'm gonna ask us all to intend for the remainder of the meeting, and for the remainder of the day, for all of us, that I have the highest possible outcome. So please join me now. That's, uh, okay, thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? I'm here representing, uh, reading a statement on behalf of our administrative team here. Silver Falls Board of Directors, it is with solemn reflection and sincerity of purpose that we, the administrative team of the Silver Falls School District, express our concern regarding the imminent superintendent search. This is a very unusual time in our, both our district and our state. In a state with 197 school districts, there have been 92 superintendent vacancies in the last three years alone. The Confederation of Oregon School Administrators, COSA, attributes much, much of the turnover to the demands of the job, lack of needed supports, and ineffective school board superintendent relationships. The administrative team have significant, significant concerns with the following as they pertain to a superintendent search. One, an unsettled license contract. Two, five board members are currently the subject of a public complaint. The outcome of the complaint is unknown and may not be determined until well into this hiring process. Three, our district currently lacks the ability to attract the caliber of candidate we need to move this district forward. Based on these concerns, the administrators of the Silver Falls School District ask our Silver Falls School Board to seriously consider suspending the permanent superintendent hiring process until the complaint is fully reviewed and resolved, and instead consider other options, including, but not limited to, explore options around Willamette ESD support for acting superintendent services until issues are resolved. Explore options through COSA for placement of an interim superintendent. Change the search to an interim position, or suspend the entire process until there is more clarity. Thank you for your time and consideration, respectfully, the Silver Falls School District Administrative Team. Brett Davidson, Kirsten Jorgensen, Jamie McCarty, Destin Maney, Kevin Palmer, Mark Hammond, Greg Cott, Leslie Roach, Wade Lockett, James Rize, Jody Drescher, Johnny Pharoah, Dana Peterson, Jennifer Hammond, Steve Nielsen, Lauren Stanley, and Drew Hines. Thank you.
I'm Ray Kager, uh, resident of Silverton 828 Southern Valley Court, uh, an ex-student at Evergreen Grade School, and ex, I mean, please, and an ex-student of Silverton High School, and ex-student of Silverton Union High School, and ex-board member of the 4C Elementary School District, and ex-engineering teacher at University of Arizona and University of Oklahoma, and an ex-science teacher here in this building. Um, I just wanna comment to the board about, about, um, the advantage from the last board meeting where you folks were, some of you were asked to resign. I think that's hasty, I think it's inappropriate, I don't think it's justifiable. What I see, uh, in the last two or four months since the board has changed, is, uh, new members and old members alike are concerned about the education of students. I think they have students at, um, the front of, the forefront of their concern. They ask questions, and I, I think that's very important for, for members to seek answers from the administration, and, and as they visit schools, they are, they're doing that. It's very possible they may, may have some new visions for the district, um, that are very appropriate and very worthwhile. And so, um, I couldn't understand everything from the back what the administrators were alluding to, but I agree, it is a very important process. I would, my comment would be if you can't do it in one year, then consider keeping Mr. Peterson on for a second year, and take the time it takes to do it right. And so, um, thank you for your service. Keep it up.
Um, hi, I'm Michelle Stadley, I'm the president of Silver Falls Education Association, here with the rest of our executive board, um, and we just wanted to, uh, address the board tonight. Um, after having heard and read the official complaint filed against five current school board members, three of whom were endorsed in their race by Silver Falls Education Association, we felt it important to make a public statement regarding the complaint, the board, and the overall culture of our school district. First and foremost, SFBA appreciates the difficult and diligent work of our school board members. We recognize that this is a voluntary position with a lot of pressure and not a lot of praise. Second, we remember exactly what has brought our district to this point in time, both the positives and the negatives. We'd like to remind everyone that your educators have spent the past years standing up and crying out against a climate of fear and intimidation in this district. Since this time last year, there have been many changes, all voluntary and fairly elected, that have gone a long way to improve the climate of our district as a whole for your educators. We want to honor the people involved in demonstrating those positive changes in tone and climate, including the members of our school board. Finally, regardless of the outcome of this complaint, SFBA would ask everyone involved in leading our school district to strive for excellence, collaboration, and transparency, and to remember our purpose in being here. Whatever your role, we are all here to lead and support our students, and to model for them the way to face challenges and to act with integrity. Thank you.
My name is Brady Tavonier, I am a senior at Silverton High School.
My name is Sarah Desha, and I'm also a senior at Silverton High School.
Um, we are here to, um, talk about a petition that we are presenting, which has gained over 150 signatures. Uh, this has been submitted via email, however felt necessary to present to the board itself.
Please state, we, the undersigned, applaud the efforts of our elected volunteer members of the school board and encourage their continued support of our schools, students, staff, and administrators.
The SFSD board models excellent governance by promoting transparency and community input and sincerely weighing that input in their decision-making, engaging in thoughtful and respectful discussions and working to build consensus, modeling true leadership while making decisions as a team, respecting the right of other board members to have opinions and ideas which differ, making decisions only after the facts are presented and discussed, providing clear direction to the superintendent and offering attentive questions to the administrators who interact with the board.
Partnering on and discussing difficult issues with the city of Silverton, such as race and equity, as recently demonstrated at a community town hall meeting, engaging our community in a necessary discussion of long-range facility planning, hiring a capable and effective interim superintendent, and launching in a timely manner the search of a new superintendent. Rebuilding trust with educators who were deeply affected by the grievances of arbitration reports, such as giving the option for a union presentation at each board meeting. Seeking out and investing time and training opportunities to work more effectively as a board, donating significant volunteer hours for special meetings, work sessions, and statewide conferences, conducting site visits to schools with the interim superintendent to learn about the great work being done by SFSD educators and students. And that's why SFSD voters and taxpayers say thank you to the board. Thank you.
Anybody else, uh, seeking to address the board then?
My name's Edward Clements. Um, I just wanted to address the board tonight. Um, I, my wife Celeste and I were two of the 112 complainants on the complaint against, uh, five board members. Uh, we took that very seriously. Uh, we are not part of a mob, and we are not angry, as was characterized, um, in social media, um, in expletive filled posts in social media. We're really not angry people, we're, uh, we care about our children that are in the school district, and we care about, um, all the children in the community. We saw conduct, uh, in the record request that was, um, alarming, and so we are part of, uh, the complaint. I was struck at the work session last week, uh, in observing, you know, it was not a public participation, but it was more observation for us. I was struck at, um, the, uh, three, three different things. Uh, one, two of the, the first thing that, um, I was struck by was two of the board members really being contrite and, um, trying to, to process through if they had made some errors in judgment, or had done some things that were inappropriate, and saying if that's the case, um, I'll take my lumps was one thing that was said, uh, or I'm happy to be censured of another, another person said another board member. I was also struck by the outright defiance of one of the board members that I believe, had the most egregious acts that were brought to attention, um, brought, brought to attention in the complaint. Total defiance and, um, almost like a fight mentality, I was struck by that, um, troubled by it. And then there were two that I think, you know, were very dismissive. I preferred the first. I, uh, the first were the, the two board members that said, you know, if you had a marked flag, there was things that we did that were inappropriate, let's take our lumps and learn, and for the greater good of this district. I just encourage, uh, stability. I, I was shocked by the things that I read after I, you know, in a careful, contemplative way joined the complaint, we were part of that, uh, we're not part of a mob, we're not angry, and it's a total mischaracterization. And, um, so I hope that for the, the good of the district, that this is resolved, um, in a, um, in a positive way, that, um, people can learn from it. I mean, I think there are some things that it's kinda hard to, hard to argue that those were not inappropriate communications. Everybody makes mistakes and we can learn, but, um, to, to be defiant and to dismiss when people, 112 people, uh, I think it's, it's a little hard to just brush that off. So I, I'm, I'm pleased that there's an independent group looking at it, and I hope for the best for the district. Thank you.
Any further public comment before we proceed? Okay, with that, we are going to move into discussion items next. First up, Silver Falls Alumni Association request. So this is a request that came through, uh, we were submitting about it, uh, earlier in the week, and, uh, the request is fundamentally to, I think, affirm a approach and a position taken by the Alumni Association. I'm going to, I guess I'll go ahead and read it real quick. Uh, we request the affirmation by the Silver Falls School District Board of the SHGS Alumni Association as your recommended committee of responsible Silver Falls citizens to locally administer the PA lower and REB lower student level. Uh, the last woman testament of them, uh, I'm trying to summarize here, donated money and, uh, to have the trust administered. Basically, what we're, what we're asked to do is to affirm that we would agree that this is a, an appropriate way to run this, and, uh, we have looked into it, and I certainly personally recommend that we move to affirm this tonight. Any, especially, anybody have anything else to add?
I would just say gratitude to the Alumni Association for the work that they do.
We've all had a chance to, to read this, so I'm not sure if we can discuss it tonight. You guys are ready to move to, accept the motion to?
Next, we did action.
Oh, and we have it later, thank you. Okay, uh, next up, uh, timeline, right? So, uh, superintendent search is on the agenda. We have Sarah, Greg, who are tonight, to give us a presentation.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. I'm really sorry, guys, I'm not quite accustomed to speaking into a microphone, and I think it might be a little too high. I'm going to do my best. Yes, that's much better. Thank you. Alright, so I believe that first on the agenda was to review and adopt the search calendar. And I'm gonna ask Debbie to, um, assist me in handing out copies to you. Alright, do any of the board members have questions about the calendar or any conflicts?
I don't think I have questions, but I do think that we ought to, uh, be discussing things like the input that we heard tonight from the administrative team. I'm sure that, sorry, I'm trying to avoid that feedback loop. Uh, we should, we should discuss, right, what we, what we think about what we heard tonight, and if that impacts any of our thoughts on this calendar as proposed by OSBA. So, I, before we get into the conflicts and specifics of it, I wanna make sure that the discussion occurred.
Okay, I completely agree.
So with that, I guess let's discuss.
Yes, yes.
We'll see where we end up.
Sure. So, did you want to discuss that right now, or do you want to move on to my input sessions with your staff and community and the survey results?
It would seem prudent to go ahead and share that.
Okay.
If it impact our decision.
Okay, sounds good. So what I have here are the proposed So what I have here are the proposed qualities and qualifications based on all of that input. And again, Debbie, thank you. Now, the board received this via email from me on Friday as well as the raw data report out of the survey which has all the results and my notes from all of my meetings separated into staff and community responses per question. So from all of that, I determined what was the most important to the staff and community members and students of your district. Now, one thing I think is important to note to you all is that everywhere I went, everyone commented on how wonderful your kids are in your district and how much the staff worked so well and was so great. Everyone had just amazing and wonderful things to say about the students and how much they loved working with them. Community members commented on how great the staff was working with their kids. It was very wonderful to hear and it was extremely consistent. So it was just, it was very heartwarming. So I wanted to make sure to share that with you. So, that said, assuming you've reviewed this document ahead of time, do you have any questions, comments, edits, additions? How does this proposed qualities and qualifications look to the board?
I would say that, one thing, this was on board book, was it?
I agree. This was received.
Yeah, but the public didn't have a chance to see this.
We have the talk to the line, not the end person.
So my question is that we did not provide this on board book in order for the public to give an overall input. I mean, obviously the public has input into this, but that was not on the document.
My initial reaction when I looked at this was that the proposed qualities and qualifications are really hard to argue. There's a lot of things you could put in a document like this. There's nothing in here that struck me as something I wouldn't want as a quality qualification. It's also sometimes difficult to think of things, you could kind of go on forever too with all this, right? So my initial reaction was it seemed appropriate. I did look through the raw data you provided us from the public feedback session, the community session, and staff session. And, you know, it's, I think it's indicative of both what we heard tonight, what we heard at the previous public board meeting where there's unfortunately significantly differing opinion. We saw a lot of, you know, it was great, continue, march forward to, you know, halt and it's all falling apart at will. So, but I thank you for all the courage to gather. Again, I don't have any particular concerns with this list personally. I think it's a good list.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan.
I was going to ask you, Sarah, is there, I don't remember from our entering the search, but I like these as well, but they're fairly high level. Is there a part of the application process or the search terms or something where you get more specific about maybe certain skill sets that you'd like to see or is this generally just it?
This is generally it. That said, if the board wants to make additions to this, you are certainly more than welcome. If there are specific qualifications, qualities, whatnot, that you really want to look for, I would recommend a statement to the effect of, not required, but...
Preferred or desired.
Thank you, I'm so sorry. No, that's a little meltdown there. Preferred but not required and then whatever your specific want is.
Okay, so there were experience with certain types of things?
Yes.
That could be something we could...
Highly preferred but not required.
So could I offer a little bit of information here because I'm the marketing guy. What happens with the qualities and qualifications is they become a part of the literature where we invite candidates to submit information. So we'll invite them to comment about how they meet these qualities and qualifications. But the real answer to your question is that's a part of the interview process and the interview questions, which will be basically a subset of this information here. So we drill down to individual candidates and more specific information. Typically, that's in the interview process.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments about the proposed quality and qualifications? Okay, well, this would be as a requirement to go into executive session for the superintendent's search. The board has to formally adopt these qualities and qualifications after having received public input on them.
Right. Which we haven't, well, we've received some public input. I think, maybe you were alluding to it, Jennifer, but I don't think it would hurt us at all to solicit public input voting on it or this would be public to the public and they're headed yet perhaps another chance to provide feedback. I know that might put a kitchen or calendar, but I think we need to talk about the calendar as well. So with that, I think what we ought to do is talk a little bit about the calendar and make sure that we're marching forward per plan. I think there's been, you know, a number of possibilities raised tonight and I think probably many of us have been considering some things as well. So I want to just make sure that conversation's held.
Okay, absolutely. And just to appease any concerns, we are also very flexible with how you are going to proceed in our participation with you in that. You know, obviously, we're aware of some problems or concerns going on right now and we also feel it's definitely important to address them and to start to keel together and build a strong relationship with your community and your staff. So we will work with you through that as much as you need.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, as much as I don't like calling on people, I do want to make sure all of you have a chance to share kind of where you're thinking regarding this calendar and so that we kind of get our thoughts about regarding how we want to proceed. Basically, this is a, I think probably a pretty standard in the aggressive standards side. It's like trying to get out ahead of curve, reach out to candidates. You know, something that was said tonight has been in the back of my mind as well. You know, I'll be honest, I've been wondering exactly what candidate is going to be knocking on our door right now. I mean, I really have. And I don't really relish that yet, that that's going to be a barrier, but I think it could be. So that's been in the back of my mind. So I'll just open with that and say I'm with it. It's certainly something that I've considered as well.
I would be open to a work session about this process. I think we've got, give it more time to talk about it, especially considering the comments from the administrative team tonight and other parts of the process.
A little microphone, a little closer here. Okay, here. Gonna use the microphone here, right, so that we can turn to the right.
Okay, oh, good. It works. I just want to say I agree with Jonathan and Jennifer that I think we really do need a work session where we could hammer out more details and look at this and hear from everyone, hopefully not in an auditorium, but maybe in a little smaller setting, so. But I would like a work session.
Yeah, I think maybe we should wait till we have some more information. We might get that preliminary report back. It'll give us more information to discuss. Something like that. It sounds like there's, Sarah, there's lots of time in this calendar.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. In doing a little preparation for this evening, my colleague Greg and I and our colleague Steve discussed some potential options and the one that we think might be most beneficial is we can essentially pause what we're doing and revisit in February. And that will not set you back dramatically in any way in terms of a strong candidate pool, time to do all of the rest of those steps, and have someone in place long before July 1st of 2020.
Yeah, I guess I'd be disinclined to make any big decisions, and I agree with Tom, until we have some more information from the investigation. So I guess it depends on whether, right now, I'm thinking, or do we just pause? Or do we actually have a work session and hammer out some of those alternatives? And maybe between now and February, as we're waiting for the investigation, it might be a good idea to at least know what those options would be so that we don't come up to that decision and then have to do work. Because all of the, some of the options that the administrators provided, I mean, I would need some information on how would that look, how would it work? So I think maybe a combination of pausing and then in that interim time, get a work session so we can really take a look at what some of the alternatives are while we wait. So I think I could much just restate what all of you said. I think we're, I think I'm in the interim.
I'm hearing a lot of, let's push the pause button and I would be inclined to agree, especially given the fact that we have some time built into the schedule of this. I heard a lot about work session, so we would have a work session scheduled naturally in January. That would be the next one because we swapped our regular session in December made a request. So the, I'm assuming you guys are good with that being the time we could discuss this?
Jonathan, when in January would that work session be?
I think it's probably on the back here.
The back end of the...
27th according to our regular schedules.
If we have information that helps to inform our, some decisions possibly cause them earlier, you know, leave that open.
I think we can stay open to that. We could move it up a week. We could, we do things like swap meetings around.
Okay, yeah.
Nothing's going to happen with you, right? I think we're pretty well sure in the holiday. So, with that...
So could I share a couple of thoughts with you? The uncertainty around circumstances, it's always a very negative impact on your candidate field. So getting to some sort of resolution, whatever that may be, clearly serves you well with regard to attracting candidates for the position. With us talking about the pause, I think it's a revisit in February, maybe a revisit in January. But what I want to encourage you to remember is it probably isn't going to make that much difference. You are out really early in the process. There's sufficient time to conduct a full search if that's your choice when we unpause. So don't be concerned. If you're into April and haven't resolved it all, then we need to have a conversation. But if you're in January or February, it really isn't going to have a negative impact on who we can attract for the position. But with the current uncertainty, districts experience this all the time. It doesn't matter what the uncertainty is. Candidates research, they look at your minutes, they look at the newspaper articles, and with uncertainty, they are concerned, so.
Right, yep, thank you.
Thank you, Greg, it's a good reminder. So what I'm hearing is we're going to basically put the search calendar and adopting the Q&amp;Qs on hold for now. You guys are going to go and do a work session. I am more than willing to attend if you would like some assistance with all of that. And then, once we pick up, wherever we pick up, then we will proceed with the rest of the items that are on the agenda in terms of salary and marketing and advertising and screening committee.
I think that's the worst idea.
Okay. Any other questions for me, guys?
I really appreciate you guys coming, apologies for the delay.
Absolutely, we're happy to be here and we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Jonathan, are we still planning on trying to approve those two items during our action items or are we holding off on the calendar and the...
We're going to postpone that.
We postponed, okay.
Okay, item C, casting a ballot on the OSBA Board of Directors. So we have the opportunity, should we choose to take it, to cast a ballot. And we have, we have a lot of information here, but there is one position in particular that has multiple positions, the rest actually only have one person. You guys get a chance to take a look at this. I sent out some information and it was in the board book. I believe that the position, LPC position 12 is the one that has...
I think it's two. I think the 12 was confusing me earlier today.
Okay. So the, really the only choice is in that position 12, and we have a choice between Glenn Hollum and Garrett Trot, one more than Meredith, and one more than Sam Yam. Did you guys get a chance to look into that and discern if you have any discussion you'd like to have on that particular topic tonight?
I looked at all the applications and the resumes. I know Garrett Trot, who used to live in this community, and I've seen him at other OSBA events. And so I would be comfortable voting for him based on my personal knowledge, but I also thought that his application was strong. And, yeah, that's, I guess I'm explaining that I know this guy. So that might make me biased, but, and he was, he's from Silverton, or used to live in Silverton.
Yeah, for whatever it's worth, on the LPC position 12, I chose Glenn. His application just seemed a lot more thorough and well thought out, so that was a, I don't know either of them, so I just, but that was my basis for that choice.
Anybody else have anything they want to add to this for discussion? I believe that the way that, I prefer the way that the board system would come to some kind of agreement that we can choose to, a motion to accept one. I believe, I think either I or Debbie casts the actual ballot, you do the W. No other input?
I was going to say, like Tom, I liked Mr. Hollum's application. I don't know either of them, so that's all I have to go on.
I'm going to mine a call on this one. I actually didn't get a chance to take a look at this information ahead of that, it was on my list and I just didn't get there. So I don't have any particular input unfortunately, I hope. All right, well, I'm going to suggest that we simply, I'll accept a motion to select one or the other, somebody wants to make a motion, we'll see what we're there.
Mr. Chair, I guess, are we doing all three or just, we just need to decide on LPC position 12?
Certainly, the rest of them are not unopposed, so.
Yeah, I move that we, that we now make Glenn Hollum for Legislative Position Committee and Legislative Policy Committee, position 12.
On second?
On second. Further discussion, all those in favor of selecting Glenn, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, or would prefer Garrett Trot, signify by saying aye, secondly. Okay. Sorry, I should've said it more clearly, but, anybody for Garrett Trot? Okay. Glenn has it. Cast the ballot accordingly, Debbie, thank you. All right, that's it for discussion items. Now we have administrative staff reports, starting with Lauren, on the Healthy and Safe Schools Plan.
Good evening, I'm Lauren Stanley, Director of Facilities for Silverfall School District. First of all, I apologize for not being here at the last board meeting. I was death of ill, so I'm not able to make it and report to you. Hopefully you've all had an opportunity to review the Healthy and Safe Schools Plan as a good board agenda. So it's pretty self-explanatory, it's a master, it's a master plan that encompasses a lot of plans that we already had in place. One of the key components to this one that it adds is really the lead and water testing. And that's all spelled out in this plan, as far as when we're testing, how frequently, et cetera. You see, we're on a three-year interval that we'll be testing all of the schools. And then it also includes radon testing, that paint, asbestos, as well as integrated pest management. So, do you guys have any questions on this plan? It is required to be adopted by the board, so.
I did not have any questions. I read through it, thank you for providing it earlier.
Okay.
Nope? Okay. And then the Integrated Pest Management Plan?
So the Integrated Pest Management Plan, also, hopefully you had enough to review it. This is basically a revised plan. We had a plan that was put in place back in 2012 when IPM came out. That plan really needed to be updated. A lot of the components and changes are really trying to improve the notification system that we've been using, trying to make sure that we get this out using electronic mail. So those are some of the changes, some training changes. There were some references in the previous plan to job descriptions that actually didn't exist. So really, this compilation here is to make sure that we're doing what we say we're gonna do, and to make sure that we're in compliance with the IPM law, so.
Great.
Does anybody have any questions?
I just said, I think this is probably a fairly easy one. Do we travel, with regard to training? There's a lot in here about people needing to be trained, and certain, do we have a way of reporting and reporting out that we've done trainings? Is that something that we keep, that we document and is available and all that?
Yes, well first of all, all staff receive a training every year, an annual training, and sits on the computer system. So everybody gets trained in IPM annually. And then there's additional training that we do for certain staff that are actually taking part, such as maintenance, custodial, kitchen. Honestly, we haven't really done a great job on those individual trainings. Since I've been here, it's been a real challenge. Basically, being a full-time project manager has been a bit challenging to get some of those done. So what we wanna do is, we do this, we start this, and so that we can get those things to do a better job of giving some of that training.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah Lauren, as a farmer, I'm very familiar with integrated pest management, I thought it was very thorough. I like it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have one question. We did receive a statement from a patron regarding Roundup, and the idea that it is on the OSU list of approved pesticides, and that schools still can use it in certain circumstances, and that the city has actually made that a specific, "We're not gonna use Roundup" in their information. Is that something that would hinder our district to do something like that?
So it is approved currently, all laws allow us to use Roundup, are still using Roundup. But it's not like we're spraying it everywhere. We're spraying in specific areas that have very, very low contact with students, and we're not doing it with student sprays. So basically, the other thing is, to be quite honest, I checked with the city, they pretty much put spraying, so they just put spraying Roundup. They started using a vinegar solution, but they've used very little, it's proved to be not effective. So we've done a lot of research on it, there's a whole lot of, I guess, documentation I've been through to find out about it. And the thing about the vinegar is, it doesn't actually kill the plant. It damages the tissue, but the root still comes back. And so you've gotta spray typically like every week, or more often, or to try and keep the weed down. There's other things that people are doing, but quite honestly, when you get into those situations, and you get into a vinegar that actually works a little bit better, which is a higher content, then it's actually more dangerous, and actually carries a warning word, danger, danger signal word on the SDSs, and we can't use that. If you read the IPM plan, anything that has a warning or a danger, we can't use. It can only be something that has a caution, so. So with all of the documentation and stuff that I have to go from, to go from, Roundup is still a safe product. That's, that's why we're still using it, so.
So the alternate would be, have more weeds, or, or, you know, yeah, I guess that would be, we don't have enough manpower to remove them manually, so that would be the alternative?
Right. And there's other things that come with that. Honestly, back in 2012, Saleem Kaiser pretty much quit spraying because of the notification requirements, and back then it was so challenging to try to get all that information out. And they had a lot of issues, a lot of other issues, they had rat issues, because the weeds got so bad around the buildings, that it was creating habitat for rodents and rats and other things, so. So there's a, there's kind of a balancing act that you gotta have in order to, you know, keep everything in check, I guess, so.
So what does Saleem Kaiser do now?
They're doing, this is, this is almost exactly the same thing, so. If you look at their, you can look up their IPM plan, it's very similar. They have the same thing as far as the OSU, linked to the OSU Low Impact Pesticide List, and that's what we do, because they are on it, so they're constantly updating. They find something that is out of whack, they'll pull it and then send us out a notification. So it's much easier for us to just say, "We're gonna use their list," because it's always the most up-to-date, the most accurate, and the safest product, so.
I appreciate your background, Jonathan, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So guys, this will come up as an action item, or both of you please, it'll come up as action items in January. Paul, you are up with your superintendent report.
Good evening. It's the time of year when we start paying extra attention to the weather forecast, so that we're ready for when the snow and ice impacts travel and our school days. In the event that bad weather disrupts school bus traffic or start times in the morning, we will release information to area radio and television stations in time for broadcast beginning at 5:30 a.m. In addition, the school district will make an automated telephone call with one of the following things to announce, such as, "School's closed." It's a couple of things I'll note here. In the case of school closure, remember that all activities are also canceled unless otherwise specified. Sometimes we do a two-hour delay. Remember that all buses will run break-in routes just two hours later than normal. We can also run snow routes on a two-hour delay, we would state that in the broadcast message. We may also do snow routes only, and remember that that means that schools starting on time, and that buses will run as close to schedule as possible. If the snow routes occur in the morning, buses will remain on snow routes for the afternoon. Snow routes traditionally occur only in attendance areas at higher elevations, like Creed, Scottsdale, Silvercrest, and Great Point areas. Parents are reminded that they are, they make a final decision about whether it is safe for the child to attend school on bad weather days. When a child cannot attend school due to bad weather, it will be considered an excused absence. As an additional reminder, this is a good time for parents to notify their children's school of any changes in telephone numbers or email addresses. I'm pleased and grateful for how the Long Range Facilities Planning Subcommittee leaders are investing time and energy to help lead the work. They are Melissa Briggs, Josh Craig, and Tom Newton. The three subcommittees will do some focused analysis and then report out to the larger committee at the end of January. These three individuals have also volunteered to help me select a facilitator and to advise me as the steering committee. I've met with each of them individually to discuss the next steps and keep some momentum, while bringing into focus how their work contributes to the whole. These subcommittees will have specific work for just a couple of months, while membership on the overall effort grows and results to a stable and committed group of stakeholders. Finally, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season, with family and friends, and I hope you'll join me if they can give others who may need special assistance at this time of the year, and look for ways to give and serve others in a period of the season. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Paul. The next up, we have SFAA.
So thank you again for allowing us to speak during regular board meetings, we really appreciate being on your agenda. So just a couple updates for you, this month, we are still in the bargaining process, and even though it's been slow-going, we're into month eight of negotiating our contract. We do feel that every time we meet, we make some progress, and that is, you know, that's a good feeling. And so we're just, we're thankful for the team sitting across from us, and just the dialogue that we've been able to have, and just the thoughtful questions and discussions that are going both ways. And I think we talked about that a little bit today during our meeting, so just want to reiterate that, that we really do appreciate that. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is, just an excitement, that we have our Annual Educator of the Year Award coming up soon, and so we sent out earlier this month the nomination form for our educators to nominate a fellow teacher, or counselor, or any licensed staff, who they've seen just really doing an excellent job. And so I have that form, and we have our SFAA meeting tomorrow, where we will talk about the people who've been nominated for that honor, and so we'll be announcing that soon. So that's what we've got for tonight, and once again, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. So next up, we have board reports. If anybody has anything they would like to share from the last week or two?
I went to the FFA auction, Paul. A pot of turkeys, really good smoked turkey from the FFA, I highly recommend it. But it was great to see all the kids doing their work, because the children, they actually put it on, so it's pretty cool. And it was great to see Paul interacting with, he was kind of a rock star, everybody was crowding around him, and so that was fun to see. Anyway, so I recommend that next year if you wanna go.
I'll share another, sorry, let's be, I'll share that I had a chance to attend Miracle Walker play right here, this last week was fantastic, so kudos to everybody who put that on. It was an amazing experience, to say the least. So now we are moving, we actually only have one action item now, because we've postponed the C. So we have an action item regarding the High School Alumni Association. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Uh, sorry, I skipped a bit. Second public comment, limited to discussion and action items, of which we have one. Well, we have other discussion items, so we have just one action. Anybody else would like to address the board?
Rick Kaiser again, sorry, I forgot this earlier. The administrative team had comments for you with regard to the hiring of a new superintendent. I think those comments are very important, very applicable. I also think that that document, if it's not available, should be put on the district website somehow, so that their concerns or ideas are available to the public as well.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Eliza Tarlin, and I'm a parent here at Silverfall School District. And hearing the slowdown in the superintendent's search really started to concern me, and I just wanted to say that I am concerned that this recent complaint stands the chance of derailing the progress that this board and our district was experiencing earlier in this school year. I urge us all to remember the important issue here, it's our kids, who are our future. Please don't let grown-up issues negatively affect the students of our Silverfall School District. I find it very discouraging that an administrator who chose to resign from our district also chose to hinder its success in her absence. I do wish our previous superintendent would have stuck with his contract during a difficult transition, but it's now time for this fine district to grow on.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge that, yes, there has been a lot of input tonight, especially around the superintendent's search. However, we know how long this takes. This is not a time to put the brakes on. Regardless of how you choose to move forward, you need to keep moving forward. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, Erin Cook, 515 West Bain Street, here in Silverton. I think you've heard a lot of public comment over the last few weeks, and even tonight, especially now with the superintendent's search. And having sat where you have sat before, it's important to listen to your constituents. It's important to listen to your teachers, people who have shown up well, as well as the SFAA tonight have given you input. But I think the one thing that hasn't been really acknowledged enough, I think, is your administrative team right here. They've given you a hard, a pretty firm recommendation, and I'm glad to hear you guys all saying that it's probably good to put the brakes on right at this point. There's a bit of things that need to get sorted out, and I do trust the process. First of all, I want to thank you for really, as one who did sign up on the complaint, taking that part and allowing due process to work itself out. But I think you really need to heed the recommendation of the public, of our teachers, but also of our administrative staff, who have urged you tonight to just pause, and you heard from the SFAA tonight, that a little pause till February. We've already gotten out of the gates well, and I commend you for that, but a pause till February is not gonna hurt this process, while we get some of our internal things figured out, okay? Thank you, appreciate the time.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I will actually now turn the page, it'll be right this time. We are moving into our first action item regarding the High School Alumni Association, and we'll accept a motion to affirm our support as presented to us.
You got a question?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out. But basically, I think we are affirming this statement right here, it says, "We request the reaffirmation by Silverfall School District Board of the SHS Alumni Association as your recommended, quote, 'committee of responsible Silverton citizens' to locally administer the PA, lower, and..."
I'd like to recommend...
I would recommend the Silverton High School Alumni Association as the committee of responsible Silverton citizens to locally administer the PA law and Marie B. Moore Student Development Department.
I second it.
Moving second. Okay, another discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. End. Okay. And with that, we are going to move into executive session under ORS 1926602B, checking out deliberations for persons designated by the governing body to carry out negotiations, as well as 1926602B to consider employee discipline or dismissal unless it opens to hearing of questions. Without, you're not hearing any, everybody disagree? Yeah, I'm trying to remember the word. We're going to adjourn unless anybody disagrees. How about that?
Sounds good.
All right. May adjourn.
Thank you.